Board meeting for June 5th. Hard to believe it's June already. So, some announcements. This Saturday is Porch Fest.
Correct, Porch Fest. I have the honor of having a band on my porch at noon on John Bassett's band called Touclez for Comfort at noon on my porch at 40 Abbotsford Road. So, I hope lots of people will show up. And there's several actually in my neighborhood as well as all over town. And you can get the schedule online. I'll come up with the address in a second. I think if you put in Porch Fest, you'll come up with it.
Brookline Porch Fest.
Brookline Porch Fest. And it should be lots of fun. And the activities are taking place all across the town in many different neighborhoods. So, it should be fun.
Next Monday, the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance is having their annual meeting. And the featured speaker is internationally known artist and Brookline resident Janet Eckelman, who did that wonderful sculpture a couple of years ago over the greenway, that floating sculpture. And she lives just off of Harvard Street. And so, she's going to be speaking. This is in this room, sixth floor of Town Hall, 6:30 refreshments and 7:00 PM the program begins. Also, next Thursday, you can learn about becoming a foster parent. The teen center over on Aspen Wall Street is hosting an information session on becoming a foster parent. There's only nine foster parents in Brookline. And this is a Paul Epstein is organizing this at the teen center. And Tito Jackson is going to be there. And representatives from the Department of Children and Families is going to be at the DCF. So, there's food and so it's really good thing. Any other announcements?
I had the pleasure on Saturday of catching the tail end of the Coolidge Corner Arts Festival. So, for those of you who may not have had a chance to make it over there, it was a vibrant celebration of arts in Brookline, a lot of vendors, a lot of attendees and compliments to Leah Cohen, who I think was the guiding light, the energy behind the festival this year.
Okay. Mr. Trahan. Right. That's Mr. Trahan.
Trahan's had a busy night tonight. For those who don't know me, I'm Paul Trahan. I'm the president of the Firefighters Union. I want to thank you for allowing me to squeak into your schedule here for a special presentation. As you know, the fire union is part of the Professional Firefighters of Massachusetts. In this previous May, the PFFM, Professional Firefighters of Massachusetts, hosted an event called Fire Ops 101, where we had the opportunity to invite politicians and the news media to spend a day in our boots, literally.
Literally, yes.
Yes. And so, we had, I had the opportunity to invite Mr. Kleckner and Mr. Waschinsky. I was pleased that they enthusiastically accepted my offer, although by the end of that day, I'm not too sure if you did. The day comprised of four types of events, simulating a medical emergency with a heart attack victim, to show just the amount of equipment is needed for a medical emergency, as well as the staffing levels that are required. We also did a vehicle extrication with the Hearst jars of life. Both our participants were very, very well involved in that. Actually made us proud as to how well you guys did.
Had a little help.
Oh, yeah, sure. Another one was the, you go into a burning room. It was a fire evolution to show you the stages of fire. It was a small introduction before the final, which was actually advancing a hose line into a burning, burning room. Through the event, unfortunately, Mr. Waschinsky's self-contained breathing apparatus started running low on air. Safety doesn't take a day off, so we quickly got him out and changed his bottle so he'd go back in. But during that time, Mr. Kleckner was on the end of the hose and the fire was a lot bigger than three of his politicians, I would have to say. And he stayed right in there. And once Mr. Waschinsky came to help him out, they extinguished the fire.
Teamwork.
It was exceptional teamwork. There were other participants, whether they were politicians or news media, opted out. They did not participate in the events where it was an option. Both Mr. Kleckner and Mr. Waschinsky participated in all of them. They were grossly involved in the incidents and actually lived up to the standards of the Brookline Fire Department. I want to thank you. So, on behalf of the Professional Firefighters of Massachusetts and President McKinnon, I want to present you his letter of thanks, as well as the helmet shield that you two were wearing when you were in the burning building. I also like to might add that, you know, Chief Sullivan couldn't make it tonight, but we're already in discussions with him that once our new academy is completed, that Brookline will host a similar event for anybody else from within the town that wants to, I see you nodding, Ben. By all means, we'll open up to everybody in town.
Let's say that was, that was quite a day. And it made quite an impression on me to kind of see what you, what you guys go through. So, that was good. I'm at a loss for words. So, let's move ahead with our calendar and I thank you. So, we have minutes for May 15th and 22nd. And then we have joint minutes for the school committee, select board and advisory committee, ad hoc subcommittee. Any changes?
I have some edits which I've given to Keith.
Okay, I'll move them in omnibus fashion. I'll move that we approve the minutes of the 15th, 22nd, and the joint meeting of the 17th. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we have the summer schedule, which is two meetings in July and two meetings in August. We will be meeting on the 10th, the 24th of July, and the 7th and 21st of August. Any issues with that?
Yeah, I have an issue with July, what was it, July 7?
10.
10, 10.
Okay.
I'm going to be out of the country, so.
Okay.
I'll have to be absent that day.
Okay. We'll have, okay. I should be here. So, looks like we'll have a quorum. I think the thing about scheduling these meetings in the summer is tough. So, we'll have to manage without you, select person.
I'm sure you'll do fine.
Okay. So, I'll move that we approve the summer calendar. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we have two Chapter 90 requests and two Chapter 90 environmental punch lists regarding Babcock Street, one of our favorite streets, at least a street we've heard a lot about.
Hi, I'm here tonight to get the board's approval on two forms, one request form to the state and the other a environmental checklist form. These are standard forms that the state uses in the Chapter 90 process. As the chairman said, these documents are related to the reconstruction of Babcock Street. And the project value for Babcock Street is now 3.1 million, and that's what this request is about. 100% of that is reimbursable. Just to give you a timeframe when, when we hope to be under construction, we are going to open bids July 2nd. And with a little bit of luck, we'll be under construction the second or third week in July.
Is, there was a grant of location at the end of Babcock Street towards Harvard over to John. Is that going to be coordinated with this?
Yes.
So, we won't be tearing the street up afterwards?
No, we won't tear it up and you won't see a patch.
Okay, good.
And I want to ask my usual question, if you don't mind, about gas leaks. And do you know whether there are specific gas leaks in this area and?
I don't know of any on Babcock Street or John Street.
Can you consult National Grid and make sure of that issue because?
I can confirm that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and the Babcock Street doesn't have any raised elements, right?
No raised element, nope.
Okay. So, any questions, comments, discussion? So, I'll move that we approve and execute two Chapter 90 project requests and two Chapter 90 environmental punch lists with the Mass Department of Transportation in connection with the reconstruction of Babcock Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is a, accepting a municipal vulnerability preparedness action grant.
Yes.
Ms. Morelli.
Yes, thank you. I'm Maria Morelli, Senior Planner, Planning Department. And I manage climate action initiatives for the town of Brookline. As you know, the town prepared a climate vulnerability assessment this past year. We submitted it to the state. And the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs awarded the town of Brookline with the municipal vulnerability preparedness designation. And that designation makes us eligible for very generous grants from the state to implement priority action items. So, this month, we were awarded a grant for a $75,000 project. Fred Russell's water and sewer budget has contributed about $19,000. And the remainder, about $56,000, is the grant award itself. So, I'm here to ask for your permission to accept this award and to outline the project's scope, if you wish. The only conditions are that the town acknowledge the state as a partner for this project, and that we make any materials or deliverables that come out of this project available to other communities so that they can also learn from us. The project itself consists of an outside engineering firm working with a wide cross-section of town departments to audit all of our relevant bylaws, regulations, planning and policy documents, to discern where we could mandate or have strict higher standards for climate resiliency. We want to reduce flooding. We want to improve water quality, reduce erosion. And so, there are opportunities to avail ourselves of any land use techniques where we might mitigate those factors. What we'll get out of that are actually a robust suite of recommendations for bylaw amendments, that's pretty key, as well as low-impact development guidelines for developers, and other recommendations for our, for our policies, including retrofits for existing buildings, which is another big thing. This is something that other communities are doing in a rather aggressive fashion. So, it certainly comes at a right time for the town of Brookline.
What's the timeframe on this?
We have until June 2019 to implement. We certainly have to pay upfront and then they will reimburse us. Certainly, if we don't meet that deadline, then we are in danger of not getting reimbursed. But we have a preliminary schedule from Westin Sampson, which is the engineering firm that would do the work. So, we're pretty confident that we have no problems meeting those deadlines.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I'd just like to compliment Ms. Morelli on the pursuit of this, this grant and the submission of the plan, the development of it. I think that it's a terrific step for the town and something we really, really need. I only wish it could cover gas leaks.
Thank you. It certainly was a team effort.
I would just suggest that perhaps provide periodic reports to the selectmen, select boards, climate action committees.
Yes, and I'm sure that that usually happens at least once a month.
Right.
Yep.
And then perhaps even toward the end, give us an update.
Absolutely. I look forward to it.
Okay. Any other, any comments, questions? I'll move, therefore, that we, where is it? Oh, there we go. That we accept the municipal vulnerability preparedness action grant in the amount of $75,000 from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And we have a few temporary licenses. First is, and I'll move them in omnibus fashion. The first is a, I'll move that we grant temporary wine and malt beverage sales license to Plano Manor College for a dance graduation reception to be held on August 12th, 2018, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM at 400 Heath Street. I'll move that we grant a temporary all kinds alcohol beverage non-sales license to Lars Anderson Auto Museum for a wedding reception to be held on Saturday, July 21, from 5:30 to 11 at 15 Newton Street. And I'll, those are the temporary licenses. They look okay?
Yeah, everything appears to be in order. And the police department sees no reason why any of these temporary licenses should not be granted.
Okay. So, I'll move that we grant them. So, all those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have a renewal of a, of the Superstar Ice Cream truck, Honey Hindi owner for a mobile food vendor license. And this would operate Sunday to Saturday, 10:00 AM to 8:30 PM throughout the town. And all our departments have approved it, with the exception of the Transportation Department.
I believe it was, approval was at our place when we walked in. And the Transportation Department only requests that when this operator is stopped and dispensing his wares, that he do it in a way that ensures the safety of customers, not against the curb.
Sounds reasonable. Do we need a formal condition for that, or that's just a, that's just a standard way of operating? I'm sure our police department will enforce that if...
And the vendor understands that? He's not here.
Yeah, he's not here.
Okay.
Okay. So, I will move that we approve the renewal of Superstar Ice Cream Honey Hindi owner for a mobile food vendor license, Sunday to Saturday, 10:00 AM to 8:30 PM throughout the town. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have some transfers within the Recreation Department. Faison?
Good evening. Austin Faison, Assistant Town Administrator. Essentially, these are transfers within Rec revolving for some of their utility costs. I take ownership over some of these because I have projections for the utilities. A little off on the cost of electricity that I calculated for that department, but it shouldn't be a problem going into the future. And I think the projections for fiscal 19 are more accurate.
Okay. Any questions, discussion? So, I'll move that we approve the following transfers from Recreation Admin Food Service account, $6,900, Medical Supplies, $2,000, and Rec Supplies, $2,400, to Electricity, $1,800, Electricity, $7,000, $7,000, $1,800 and $7,000, and then Natural Gas, $2,500. So, it's shifting from some service and supply accounts to a couple of utility accounts. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. See, I'm an equal opportunity forgetter.
Thank you.
I was pointing that out, this was person Green.
Okay. So, we have a couple of police department personnel items. So, the first item is authorization to hire a parking control officer. Chief Morgan.
Chief Morgan, Brookline Police Department. We have sudden resignation of a parking control officer. We'd like to authorize you to fill that spot. It's very important as far as the parking enforcement, the meter enforcement, and for our spots, et cetera, so.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Since, as I understand, this position many times evolves into a position on the police force. So, it makes it, is that correct?
No, we really haven't hired that many people off from the parking control. Those are basically the, what we call the meter maids and the school crossing guards. We did have the meter collection people who has led to police jobs, as far as numerous. But as far as some individuals in the academy, Christopher Rodriguez, he worked as a meter collector under the Parking and Traffic Division, and now he was hired as a police officer. But the school crossing slash parking control office really hasn't matriculated into a police officer's job this time.
I stand corrected, but still, I encourage you to make sure that the pool of applicants is diverse, you know, even though it's not a stepping stone in the police department. And my point was going to be that, you know, it's good to have people in the pipeline with a diverse background for advancement into the police department itself. But I stand corrected in terms of this specific position.
No, I understand that. I think, believe, I see the record of our hirings over the last several years, we're very diverse department, especially with the student officers in the academy now.
I'd like to ask, have you notified, is this person at one of the schools as a crossing guard?
That particular position that we resigned, had just started doing the crossing guards. But it was the, it was a full-time tagging position that we had negotiated with the union to start crossing guards, but she resigned. So, going forward, it will be, somebody will have a post to do crossings for the schools.
I'm just, I'm just wondering whether the folks, the parents and the kids at the school where this crossing is occurring know that this person is, has resigned and will be replaced?
Yes, as far as this particular position, this individual resigned, didn't have a full-time crossing guard. She was filling in, decided somebody was out sick at that time. So, it was some kind of union negotiation to a particular position.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'll move that we authorize the filling of the parking control officer vacancy in the police department. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And for the main event, we have the question of appointing student officer Joseph Trahan as a probationary police officer effective June 5th. Chief Morgan.
Yes.
Yes, Joseph Trahan worked for the MBTA Police and went to the MBTA Police Academy. He's a 27-year-old white male, resides in West Roxbury. As I said, he actually is originally from Norwood. He graduated from Suffolk University with a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science in 2016. He has also currently enrolled in a Master's of Criminal Justice Program at Boston University. Mr. Trahan enlisted in the Army in 2009 and served until 2013, including a one-year tour in Afghanistan. He graduated from the MBTA Police Academy, has been employed by the MBTA Police since March of 2016. Mr. Trahan has made representation to me that he is leaving the MBTA Police because he wanted to be involved in a more community-oriented police department. And that led him to, he takes the civil service test and actually apply here in Brookline.
Okay. Well, congratulations for going through the process and coming on board. So do we...
So if you vote to appoint him, I'd actually have Tom Clark, Pat Ward come in and swear him in, and then we'll do a penance ceremony.
Okay. So let's do the vote, then we can offer congratulations and then...
Yeah, he'll be a probationary police officer for one year from the state, and it'll go through our field training process and work on his own until the end of probationary period.
Okay. So I will move that we appoint Student Officer Joseph Trahan as a probationary police officer effective June 5. That's today.
That's correct.
Oh, wow. Okay. All those in favor, please say ayes. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So congratulations.
Tom Clark, Pat Ward, can you come in and give the swearing in at this time?
You guys want to stand up? Mr. Remy?
Up to you.
More than married. I repeat your name.
I, Joseph Trahan.
Solemnly swear affirm.
Solemnly swear affirm.
And I will faithfully and impartially...
I will faithfully and impartially...
...disdodge all the duties incumbent upon me.
Disdodge all the duties incumbent upon me.
As a Brookline police officer.
As a Brookline police officer.
According to the best of my ability and understanding...
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
And under the rules, regulations, and bylaws.
And under the rules, regulations, and bylaws.
May they have the authority they have.
May they have the authority they have.
Congratulations. 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 So what I'm getting on there? Want to do this again? Jessica. Jessica. Get out of the way here. You don't want a picture of me. Let the second carry on. Take some pictures out of the...
Congratulations.
Ten minutes.
Yeah. Well, we can talk about the stuff at the end.
Yeah, we could. We could make this very happen if you want, or...
Yeah.
Well, we could do 11 or 10, 11.
Yes. Wait for Ben to come back.
Sure.
So we're actually a little ahead of schedule, which is very nice. We're going to jump to 10, do the items at the end. So we're a little ahead of schedule for our 7 o'clock public hearing, which I'm not going to start before 7:00. So let's, there are a couple of items at the end that I'd like to move up. And the first one is talking about the Indigenous Peoples' Day Celebration Committee. And back in November, the town meeting voted a resolution to set up a committee to plan for a celebration of Indigenous Peoples' Day, which corresponds with Columbus Day. So the committee, well, I guess, let me ask Mr. Select Person Green about this. How did this land on your lap?
Well, I don't know how it landed on my lap, except that we needed to do a charge for the committee. And I took it from myself to put together the charges in the materials here. It's fairly straightforward. Sets up the committee of five Burbine residents who will be voting members of the committee. The committee can ask for additional members if that's appropriate. And can ask non-resident members to join the committee as non-voting members. Let's see. The focus of the, I think the key thing in the charge is that the focus of the committee should be the culture, history, and diversity of Indigenous people, including the adversity suffered by Indigenous peoples as a result of European conquests of the Americas, but in a manner that prioritizes education and reconciliation and appropriate advocacy in line with the town's values of diversity, inclusion, and positive community relations among all peoples. So I think the next step is to, is to solicit members on this committee and let them go to work, as well as identifying a board member, not me, to participate on the committee, if that's necessary.
I thought one of the, one of the conditions that we set up to support this thing was that this committee would be, wouldn't have a select person on it.
That is also my recollection.
I stand corrected. Again.
So it's my...
I think that's perfectly appropriate.
Right. And that's the promise we made.
To ourselves.
Right. And to the public when we agreed to support this.
And I believe that the committee will be working with Dr. Jellino.
Right.
Is that correct?
Correct.
So that...
So they'll have some staff support.
So they have staff support, and he can always bring any issues to us.
Right. So I would just appeal to members of the public who wish to serve on this committee to apply. And let's get going to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. So I'll move...
I do have one question for Select Person Green. So I see that there's five residents that are going to be on this committee, and that if the committee wishes, we can appoint more people.
Correct.
Is there a maximum number, or could the committee come to us with a request to appoint an additional 15 people? Would that be...
Well, as written, there's no maximum number. I think as a practical matter, the maximum is going to be just two or three in terms of finding people to take on this responsibility, as well as, you know, the committee's wisdom in recognizing that a too-large committee is going to be unwieldy and will actually undermine the purposes of the committee, so.
And it's a majority of the appointed members that are...
Right. I mean, I see no need to put an upper limit, but, you know, if you think that that's appropriate, I don't think there's a problem.
Okay. I'm good with it. Any other questions or comments? So I'll move that we adopt the draft charge for the Indigenous Peoples' Day Celebration Committee. All those in favor, please say ayes. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Is, do we have someone who's going to be kind of honchoing this?
I will, I thought she would be here today, but Kia Vanderzil is basically taking ownership of this.
Okay.
I'll contact her and let her know that we're off and running.
Okay. Next item that we're moving up is the fee for the recreational marijuana facility license. And the proposal is for a license fee of $450. And this is not to be confused with the host agreement fee or the tax. So Mr. Faizan.
Austin Faizan, Assistant Town Administrator, again. That is correct. Contrary to how it was done with the registered medicinal facility, in this case, the host community agreement was the way the state regulations are. It's supposed to completely offset the impacts to the host community. So that's what we're going to be working, well, we already have one with NEDA, but going forward with any entities that reach out to the town, that's going to be the first step, is the host community agreement. In terms of local licensing, it's really a matter of moving the paperwork along and making sure things are noticed correctly. So it's a minimal impact, and that's why the fee is dramatically reduced this time because we're catching it with the host community agreement instead. So this fee is made up of the salaries of a different employees for a few hours each.
Just for the public's information, have any other facilities applied with us at this point officially?
No, they haven't. The applications for the state opened up on June 1st for non- conversions of RMDs that said no one can apply to the state until they have a host community agreement in place that can be certified with host community. So entities would have to negotiate a host community agreement with us first. People have reached out, but no one has formally requested a host community agreement as of right now.
So can I ask, this would, this fee would be charged as soon as somebody asks to negotiate, to get a license?
Yep.
This fee would be in place?
No. So this fee will be in place, but it happens later in the process. The way, we're going to be putting this out on the website, we're just figuring out some of the particulars, but it's going to go host community agreement.
As a first step?
Yep. Working with the, and this is all internal, which is running parallel to the state. Then it would go to working with the Building and Planning Department, building permit, which would get rejected, special use, then go back to the license with you. So the board will have the opportunity with the host community agreement to get a first pass at any of these entities, and then also with a licensing agreement, with the decision on a license at the end, they'll have another opportunity to have...
So then this fee would be charged when the facility or whoever it is applies to the building department for a permit?
No, this is, this is all the way at the end with just, with the select board's office getting in front of the board to issue a license.
I see.
So this is basically the, a fee attached to the last step of the process.
Select person Green.
Yeah, just to get a sense of how high the interest is for bringing in or for opening marijuana establishments, could you share with us how many people have reached out to get information?
I mean, is it more than 10 or less than five?
I would say maybe around 10. I've had multiple inquiries. Some have gone to planning as well. We're trying right now because it's kind of the new world of it, instead of the conversions, looking at ones that are trying to feel us out. People have called our planning department. So people have been making inquiries. We still, we're still at the step that we need the AG's office to approve all of our zoning and things like that, too. So we can't even do any of the special zoning until all of that is approved. So at this point, they can try to negotiate with us for a host community agreement, but that's kind of the step in the process that they'll get to internally until some of the other stuff is laid out. But there is interest, no question.
So I will move that we approve the fee schedule for recreational marijuana facility licenses under Mass General Chapter 94G, Section 3. All those in favor, please say ayes. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
So we're actually at a, it's right at 7 o'clock. And I can, will the, how fast do we think the discussion, I don't want to be rushed, though, on the committee discussion. I'm sorry. Okay. So let's, let's now move to the public hearing on the 40B project eligibility letter. Just as a matter of information and introduction, the, Chapter 40B allows for a developer to exceed the requirements of our zoning if a certain percentage, see the 20% or 25%, depending on the affordability level, of the units are pledged to be affordable. And that's, of course, just one of the requirements. That's the main requirement, there's other regulatory requirements. But it's, it's in some ways an accelerated process, in other ways, it's a long process. But this is the first step. And the first step is to apply to a state subsidizing agency for a, what's called a project eligibility letter, a Pell letter. And that's been done for the project at 1223 Beacon Street, Hampton Court, which is at the corner of Beacon Street and St. Paul, right in the center of town. The, this application has been made to an agency called Mass Housing, which is one of three or four subsidizing agencies. And each of the subsidizing agencies ask the town to supply initial comments to the subsidizing agency so that subsidizing agency can consider them in the project eligibility letter. This hearing is to hear from the public about, you know, what do you think we should put into our comments? We've already heard from the planning board, who I believe has had a hearing on this. And we've also heard from the preservation commission, they have some suggestions, both of them. And this, this board is going to have the opportunity to make suggestions, and we're anxious to hear what, what people who are in the vicinity think of this. So this is, I think, our 13th or 14th 40B application in the last, I guess, four or five years. In the last three years, we've had maybe 10, 12? So this little introduction I'm giving, this is the 10th or 11th...
the discussion, I don't want to be rushed, though, on the committee discussion. I'm sorry. Okay. So let's now move to the public hearing on the 40B project eligibility letter. Just as a matter of information and introduction, the, Chapter 40B allows for a developer to exceed the requirements of our zoning if a certain percentage, see the 20% or 25%, depending on the affordability level, of the units are pledged to be affordable. And that's, of course, just one of the requirements. That's the main requirement, there's other regulatory requirements. But it's, in some ways, an accelerated process. In other ways, it's a long process, but this is the first step. And the first step is to apply to a state subsidizing agency for a, what's called a project eligibility letter, a Pell letter. And that's been done for the project at 1223 Beacon Street Hampton Court, which is at the corner of Beacon Street and St. Paul, right in the center of town. The, this application has been made to an agency called Mass Housing, which is one of three or four subsidizing agencies. And each of the subsidizing agencies ask the town to supply initial comments to the subsidizing agency so that subsidizing agency can consider them in the project eligibility letter. This hearing is to hear from the public about, you know, what do you think we should put into our comments? We've already heard from the planning board, who I believe has had a hearing on this. And we've also heard from the preservation commission, they have some suggestions, both of them. And this board is going to have the opportunity to make suggestions, and we're anxious to hear what people who are in the vicinity think of this. So this is, I think, our 13th or 14th 40B application in the last, I guess, four or five years. In the last three years, we've had maybe 10, 12? So this little introduction I'm giving, this is the 10th or 11th time I've done it in the last couple of years. So I'm kind of doing it from memory now. The first time I did it, I had all kinds of notes. Now I guess I don't need them. So the applicant is Chestnut Hill Realty, and we see a familiar face at the podium, Andy Martino. So I'm just going to have to remember that you're now on the, you've crossed to the dark side, the other side.
I haven't heard that yet.
So the way we've done this in the past is we have the developer present their proposal to us in summary fashion. And one thing I always suggest is, at this stage, don't emphasize what's happening inside the, inside the development. You know, we're focusing on the massing and the impacts on the neighborhood. So don't spend a lot of time showing us floor plans.
Okay. That might be hard.
You can talk about floor, but, you know, we're looking at the impact on the neighborhood. The internal stuff would be later on in the process.
Right.
So after, after this public hearing, what I will try to do is summarize the comments that I've heard and get a consensus from the board as to what should be in our letter. Ms. Steinfeld, the planning director, is here and will be taking notes and listening to us. And next week, we'll be approving a letter to Mass Housing. And I think our deadline is, the next Wednesday has to go out. So we're looking at approving it at next Tuesday's meeting. And that will just be a discussion amongst the board. It won't be a public hearing, and we won't be taking any comments at that meeting. But, you know, you're welcome to be here or watch it on TV. But tonight is your opportunity to comment. And then, once the Pell is issued, the developer has the option of then applying to the zoning Board of Appeals for a comprehensive permit, and then we're off to the races. But, and that's when there'd be a lot of public hearings, input. But in the end, under 40B, there are only a number of factors, thank you, that we can deny or push back on the project. The law itself is set up to encourage affordable housing, and it takes away a lot of the discretion that the town has normally under normal zoning proceedings. So just be aware that the way the law is set up, the table is stacked against the town. But we do have the means to push back on various things, and we do. So with that said, I'll just say one other thing. Communities can come out of 40B or be sub, or come under what's called a safe harbor once 10% of the community's housing is in what's called the subsidized housing inventory. And that doesn't mean 10% of the units in town are, quote, "affordable." They just have to appear on the subsidized housing inventory. So, for example, in a 40B project that is a rental, if you have, let's say, 100 units in the project, if 20% of them are affordable, they could qualify as a 40B. We get the entire 100 in the SHI, not just the 20 that are affordable. And that's the case with all of the 40Bs that have been coming, that have been coming before us in the last few years. They've all been rentals, and we get all of the units. If it was a condo, we would only get the affordable units. But in a rental, we get all of the units in the SHI. Lastly, before I turn it over to Mr. Martino, the town is getting very close to the 10%. But close isn't good enough. Close is no cigar. We have to be over the 10%. And once we're over the 10%, then we can look at a developer and they come in, we can, if we desire, we can say no. But we can't just say no until we hit the 10%. Then there are some other ways to get the safe harbor. We had the safe harbor last year, till earlier this year, because we had approved more than 131 affordable units. So, you know, that could happen this year, but we're not subject to a safe harbor now, so we're open for 40B business, and some people would say, unfortunately. So with that said, Mr. Martino.
Thank you. Andy Martino, Development Project Manager for Chestnut Hill Realty. Put together a brief presentation of our project eligibility letter plans, the plans that were included in the Pell application to Mass Housing. So I'll run through those. I'll talk a little bit about the existing conditions in the building. We do have some floor plans, but I won't spend too much time on those. And we have a couple of, or at least one, I should say, preliminary massing image perspective of the building. So with that, I think everybody's familiar with the site, and as the chair said, we're at the corner of St. Paul and Con Street, Coolidge Corner just to the east, St. Mary's Business District to the west, Halley Inn directly across the street. The site consists of two parcels, the site where Hampton Court is currently located, existing parking, existing building, and then there's another parcel that's at the end of the driveway that runs the length of the site and the length of the neighboring building, where we also have access to parking. Existing conditions, it's a building that was built in 1900, four-story brick building. It was a residential hotel for a number of years prior to Chestnut Hill Realty's acquisition of the property, at which point it was converted to residential units, mostly studios with some ones and twos. The glass enclosure that you see on the front was added later in the 80s. And the program currently consists of commercial units on the basement level, a restaurant space at the corner of St. Paul and Beacon Street. The restaurant space also occupies a portion of the glass enclosure. CHR has small leasing office, and the rest is residential use. This is a view of the rear of the building, standing at the entrance to the driveway on St. Paul Street. So currently, vehicles come in off of St. Paul into the parking here through the Jersey barriers. Here's the driveway that I had mentioned that runs the length of the site and comes around. There's also an existing curb cut over here, which is not currently in use and would be closed as part of this project. This image also gives you a sense of how dramatically the site slopes as you move from west to east. There's a pretty significant drop-off as you move towards Boston. View looking back west, so opposite end of the parking lot now. Again, you can see how the site slopes. I'm actually standing on the driveway when I took this photo, so it gives you a sense of how much elevation change there is. You have the neighboring building across St. Paul Street, which is nine or 10 stories, depending on which side of the building you're standing on. And again, the curb cut that would close is over there. So the proposal summary, we have a site area of a little over 35,000 square feet. The gross floor area would be just under 170,000 square feet. The building would be enclosed with a building that steps up from four stories to nine to 11, with a max height of just over 116 feet. We're proposing 123 total units, 31 of which would be affordable at 80% AMI with 79 parking spaces. And the office space that I had mentioned in the basement level is included in the 169-700 number. Our proposed unit mix, mostly one-beds and two-bed units, with some studio units and three beds mixed in. You see the breakdown by affordable and market rate. We put together a site plan, because there's a lot going on with this site with a couple of different parcels in play. So just quickly, the driveway that runs the length of the site and comes around to the existing parking. Parking would be accessed and housed within the new building, so it would be housed in two levels, two-deck structure. There'd be a lower level that would be accessed here off the driveway, and an upper level that would be accessed here. You can see that we're proposing a roof deck on top of the parking structure as an amenity for residents. And then you have the building itself, which we're proposing to preserve the facade of the building and a portion of the front portion of the facade of the building. So a way to think about it is, you have the existing four stories of facade that would be preserved, and you have the new structure that comes out onto the back of the site of what is currently the surface parking area, and then you have the 11-story tower that takes up the corner of the site. So four, nine, 11. Quickly through the floor plans, basement level plan. So here you have the driveway, the lower level of parking, which is accessed off of this ramp. You have the basement level office and mechanical spaces that I had mentioned, moving up to the first floor. You have the next level of parking, which is accessed by a ramp up here. And then you have the beginning of the units, and what is currently the restaurant space would be an amenity space. One thing that I will point out is, the new plans are overlaid onto the existing building footprint, which includes the glass enclosure. We anticipate having to modify that as part of this plan, primarily because where we have units on the ground floor that have window walls, we'd want those windows to open out onto the street and not into the glass enclosure. And quite frankly, it's also a tired element to the building and something that we'd want to improve part of the overall project. Levels two through four are your standard residential program, mix of units. Here you see the roof terrace, which is on the second level, again, above the parking structure. Levels five through nine, then you can see the footprint of what would be the new structure and a portion of the facade on Beacon Street that would be preserved. And then levels 10 through 11 in the back corner of the site along St. Paul. We included a cross-section here, so this is a view looking through the building, looking west, so as if you were standing in the center of the neighboring building, Richmond Court. So you have Beacon Street here. You have your parking levels, office, residential units.
Where is, St. Paul is on?
Other side of this amen.
So you're, so this wall that we're looking at is parallel to St. Paul?
Correct. So you're looking through the building. It's a cross-section that helps to illustrate the program.
So where would the, where is the existing building represented in this?
Here.
So this is, so that's on top of the existing building?
No. So we're not proposing to build on top of the existing structure. What we're proposing, and I'll go back, this is the best slide, I think, for it. So the new structure is muted in gray, and then the portion that's outlined is the preservation of the facade and the first 15 feet or so of the existing structure. So this is four stories.
So if you go back 20 feet, you're on top of the existing structure?
If you go back 20 feet, you would be within the existing new structure.
So in other words, this new structure will tower over the existing structure. Is that correct?
It would be attached to the existing, so.
It's going to loom over it. It's going to be many more stories higher.
Well, it will be higher than four stories, yes.
Yeah. So it's going to be, you're saying it's going to be 11 stories? Is that what you said?
11 stories in the back corner of the site.
So it's going to be twice the size.
In the back.
Twice the height.
Go back a slide, or go to that cross-section. So it's currently 245?
It's four stories currently.
Okay. And then you're going to be putting 246 on top?
Not on top.
Next to it, but over it. Higher than.
Next to it. Next to it and higher than what would be, so it's like a wedding cake.
Not quite so attractive. But that's subjective, I understand.
So just continuing on, we included this slide just for some additional context. You have our site, for the building anyway, highlighted in red, and then a number of buildings in the quarter-mile radius that range from just under 90 feet to a little over 122 feet. And then finally, a very preliminary perspective of what the building could look like. So this is from the street or curb of Beacon Street, looking west towards Coolidge Corner. And you can see the new structure in the back of the part of the facade that's been preserved of the existing structure. And that's it.
So one of the things you haven't shown us, and it's, and in the application itself, it's, I'll just spit it out. It's probably, of all the 40B applications I've seen, it's probably the worst-drawn elevation that I've seen. You can't really get a sense of the project from it. It's almost like me trying to draw it, and I'm a terrible artist. So I think, one of the comments where I'm going to suggest we put in our letter is a comment on the quality of the elevations and a request that you guys do better.
We anticipate developing the renderings in greater detail and with better quality as the process moves forward.
Yeah, and I would hope that the subsidizing agency requires it prior to the issuance of a Pell, at least so we and they and the public can get a sense of the project, because you can't really from this. Anyone else want to?
Two questions. I think the location for a large residential structure like this on Beacon Street is good, because it encourages transportation using the T. Just throw that out. First question is, what are the rental rates for the market units? What do they range?
I don't have it off the top of my head. It's in the Pell application. We could take a moment to look it up, or we could do it out.
Are they going to bump up the rates in that area? Or are they going to be consistent with what's typical rental rates in that area?
Well, they'll be consistent with the market rates for that area for that type of building.
Well, market rates could be anything, I mean.
Well, it'll be new construction, so it'll be a little bit more expensive than older housing stock. It'll be market rate.
The other thing, on your view looking most on Beacon Street, I think that's a useful illustration of what it's going to look like. My question is, will the towers, here you have three towers, the three wings, are they going to be architecturally similar to the facade that they're in front of?
I think the concept that we're going with initially was to try and create, thank you, to show some materials that would be consistent with the existing facade. Matching the brick color in a rendering is always challenging. You know, these are very preliminary images, and we anticipate that when the process were to move, goes forward, the architecture, materials, design, all of that would be further refined and developed as the process continues.
Can that be a request or requirement in our letter? That, you know, the two parts of the building not be inconsistent architecturally, so that, you know, you don't have a modern tower behind a old, you know, facade?
I imagine.
It'd be kind of jarring.
Sorry, I imagine the preservation staff will have a lot to say about the difference between the buildings as well.
I believe the preservation staff's.
Yeah, they've already.
Already weighed in to some extent. But I'm actually very concerned with the letter from the planning board. In my three years on the board, we've never received a letter from a planning board at this early stage in the process. And they are extremely concerned, according to this letter, about several of the aspects of this project. Specifically, they recommend that we urge Mass Housing to require the applicant to submit plans that more accurately depict what is in fact being. plans that more accurately depict what is in fact being proposed prior to the Pell being issued. And I agree with that. I think we should definitely do that. In fact, I would have us even think about submitting a letter to Mass Housing, which says that we need more detail first before we can comment on this, because it's so inadequate. The proposal... And the planning board goes on in its letter, which you find at 7.2 to 7.4 of our packet. And it has many, many, many criticisms of this project. I've never seen this at this early stage. So I would urge us to adopt these in our letter and to basically urge Mass Housing to tell the developer to go back and submit something that addresses these concerns, because they are serious. And we should have them in hand before we're asked to comment on the project that you're proposing.
Anyone have anything else before I open it to the public?
I've got two questions. I got a little bit confused, Mr. Martin, when you were talking about eliminating a curb cut on St. Paul Street. My impression is that we're decreasing the number of curb cuts and you're relying exclusively on the existing driveway. That's correct. It's going to be an exit off of that sort of existing driveway to parking structure, two-level parking structure. Is that correct?
It would be similar to how it functions now, so that... I'll go to the plan. So vehicles currently access the site exclusively from this curb cut onto the driveway. There's another curb cut somewhere in the area here that's not in use at the moment. It hasn't been used for some time. So vehicles would enter and exit off of St. Paul onto the existing driveway via the existing curb cut. Vehicles currently access the existing parking lot now through an entry here to this little parking lot, and there would be a ramp here for the parking deck. So, ramp, but generally the same type of circulation.
Just out of curiosity, that long driveway, do you guys own that whole driveway?
No.
That's an easement?
It's an easement, and we have full access rights.
So, the only piece of parking that you own is over to the right?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there anything underneath this parking lot now in terms of drain easements or conduits? I'm looking at this technical drawing, and I see a bunch of lines, and I'm just not sure what they are, so...
I don't know which drawing you're looking at, but there are utilities on the site.
Okay. But there's no stormwater easement or anything like that?
We tend to hear a lot about massing and shadows. Have you kind of looked at how the structure might affect nearby buildings?
Well, I mean, in formulating the massing, we looked at what would be, what we felt at this time would be most appropriate for locating the taller mass of the structure, and we felt that that corner was more appropriate rather than having it looming over Beacon Street. In terms of shadows, we're on the right side of Beacon Street for that, and shadows would be cast onto Beacon.
Okay.
We were studying the parcel across the street for the Holiday Inn, and one of the issues there was, being on the other side of Beacon Street, the shadows were cast towards Parkman, which created an issue and sensitivities. Appropriately so for the neighbors here, the shadows would be cast across Beacon to the MBTA, and then how far beyond that, you know, is to be seen. And then how that can be minimized, given the placement of massing. I would agree with Select Person Green that, you know, additional development on that site, given its location, proximity to transportation, could be, you know, handled in some manner. Whether it's this level of massing and this particular use being... An ideal use is another story, but in terms of, you know, location that can handle mass, I think it's a fairly...
Well, and I think the planning board has detailed the gross square foot as being three and a half times the size of the existing structure. And they talk... You know, this letter talks about the negative impact of the massing of this 11-story tower situated close to the property, and it's likely to block all views from the 10-story property to the west across St. Paul. So I think that's something else that we should be mentioning as a significant negative of this proposal.
I think the point that Select Person Green and Select Person Ruschinski were making is, this is a gap, sort of a gap in the tooth along St. Paul and sitting right behind Beacon Street. So it makes sense that something is done there. I think what we're objecting to is the amount that's being done.
Correct. The mass of it. The height and the mass of the building is completely out of scale.
Right.
My comment really is going to do with the building, but the general view that we hear a lot of talk in Brookline about how do we reduce the dependency that people have on the cars? And here's an opportunity to do that. And we can't let, you know, other considerations get in the way of using that opportunity.
Hey, I have a question. Andy, I don't know whether or not you'll be able to answer this, but the 10-story building across the street, what is that mass? Is it 10 stories for the entire building?
Yes.
Yeah?
Well...
Do you know how many?
Across St. Paul, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, one of the things to... Let me go back. Yeah. One of the things to consider is, St. Paul, you're coming down the hill here, so the building is 10 stories if you're standing on Beacon Street. If you're standing over here, it's, you know, nine. So the site slopes.
Do you know how many units are in that building?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
But the 11-ish story structure that you're proposing on the corner is smaller than that building.
It would be comparable in height.
Yeah, but it's smaller than that mass.
Right.
Okay.
What I'd like to do is open this up for public comment. And one thing I say to people... First, let me just get a sense of the room. How many people would like to speak? 6, 7. Okay. I'm going to ask... Try to keep your comments, you know, four, five minutes. In the past, I've even had, I've had shorter time limits because we've had more people wanting to speak, so... And the other thing I would ask is if you... If someone else has made the point that you're going to make, it's perfectly okay to say, "I agree with the speaker before me on points 1, 2, and 3," and then add the additional points, and it'll just make things a lot quicker and more efficient, still get the point across. So, sir, why don't you come on up and introduce yourself for the record. Remember, you're on TV, so speak into the microphone, so our vast TV audience can hear you. And, sure.
So my name's Daniel Lescollier. I'm a member of the Board of the 159 St. Paul Condominium Association, which is the neighboring property to the south of this project. So I have about three comments initially at this time. The first one is a traffic safety issue because of the setback on the south edge of the property, having to do with the garage exit on the southwest corner, the garage exit next to St. Paul Street. If someone is exiting that garage and they want to look at the oncoming traffic from the private way, they won't be able to see it because there's no setback on the south side of the building. The building goes right up to the private way, so a driver is several feet behind the front of the car, so won't be able to see the oncoming traffic. And that's both traffic from the lower level of this property's garage and also traffic from the Marshall Street Building's parking lots. So that's an issue with the setback on the south side of the building. I also wanted to talk about the setback on the St. Paul Street side. If zoning was followed, I don't know the exact rules, but I think the setback would have to be 30 feet or more for such a high building.
In the rear?
Is it... I don't know if it's classified as side or rear or...
But anyway.
Well, anyway, but all the neighboring properties, including our property and the property to the south of us, we're setback around 15 feet. So if... And like we have yard, front yard space, like the 15 feet in front of the building. So the property, this development would blend into the neighborhood much more if they were also setback 15 feet and had a yard in front. In the project eligibility letter, one of the things that they promote is the walkability of this location. So if you're walking on St. Paul Street on that side of the building and you have an 11-story building right up against the sidewalk, you know, having this massive wall next to you, I think that degrades the walkability of the neighborhood. And the last item is about that the highest part of the building is right up against St. Paul Street. If instead the highest part was in the center of the lot, you know, the portion of the building in the center of the lot, that could be higher than the part of the building that's right on the edge of the lot. I think that would make the neighborhood nicer.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So those are my three comments.
Thank you.
Yes.
Come on up. Don't be shy. Who's next?
Hello.
Howdy.
Thanks for making the public comment available. I'm Alex Bornsboyle. I live at 97 Sewell Ave. in the condo association there. It's... Sorry. Right next to the Samuel Sewell Inn, which is on the corner of St. Paul and Sewell. So, initially coming, my first concern was about shadow, and I'm glad to hear that the shadow actually, if I'd thought about it, I would have figured out, will fall onto Beacon Street, other than on any of the buildings nearby. I do still have concerns about traffic and also about our schools. And I'm also a teacher in the Brookline Schools, and we're very overcrowded, and we're struggling to solve that problem, as you know.
Yeah.
And this is adding 77 units that could accommodate children, two- and three-bedroom units. So I wonder how the Select Board has dealt with that question and what are their plans for that?
Well, let me disappoint you by saying, under the 40B rules, that's not a topic we can address.
Okay. I do support, you know, having more affordable housing, for sure, and I'm really glad to see that. Not a NIMBY person, but that was a concern. So... And my final point that hasn't been addressed yet is just about preserving the beauty of the neighborhood and of Beacon Street and the unique historical buildings that line Beacon Street. And I want to make sure that whatever is proposed and built would fit in with the historic nature of the buildings headed east on Beacon Street and not just kind of fit in with the very bland block buildings that we see headed west on Beacon Street immediately. So, thank you very much.
You wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, in addition to the fact that we can't, under 40B, address this issue of children in the schools, I'm a little uncomfortable with taking the position that we are going to close off Brookline to a certain segment of the population. I think that that's a somewhat risky position.
Well, it's also... That was not at all my intent. It wasn't a connection between 40B and the schools. It was just purely about numbers.
No, I know. We hear this a lot, and I think we just have to be very careful that we're not saying, you know, Brookline is not hospitable to families.
Agreed, agreed. And I certainly welcome families and kids into Brookline. We just need to solve our school overcrowding problem first.
And for different issues.
And for tomorrow night.
For tomorrow night.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Come on up.
Israel Yar, from across the street.
Tell us your name again, I'm sorry.
Israel Yar.
Okay.
From across the street, from Beacon Place. One thing about the shadow, they say as if most of the shadow is going to go to Beacon. Actually, the tall building, the 11-story-high building, is due east, a little bit more to the south of the Beacon Place. The 1, 2, 4, 3, Beacon. Which means, as far as I know, if somebody is on the east of you, you get the shadow, unless somebody wants to argue about that.
Well, I'm not going to argue.
So the shadow is going to be, because it's so high, is going to be straight on Beacon 1, 2, 4, 3 building. Another thing is, obviously, very obviously, is going to reduce the value of the apartments of Beacon Place because of shadow, because of the nearby neighboring 11-story-high, and because it's going to obstruct completely the view. I just want to point it out, if there is any compensation for lowering somebody else's value of apartment, putting it for you to decide.
Yeah, that wouldn't be for us. That would be the courts, I guess.
In time.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Any... Anyone else wish to speak? Come on up, join. Don't be shy. Yeah, and if the next person wants to just get ready, that would be okay too.
I'm Elizabeth Kennedy, and I live on Marshall Street. Traffic is the big issue here. That private access driveway, to which the presenter of the Hampton Court has referred, there's 35 cars that get out to St. Paul Street on that access. He's saying that this new development, the cars would come into that access and then go into the garage. It seems like those 35 cars would almost be captive in terms of accessing St. Paul Street. It's already a major issue. St. Paul Street will have traffic blocked up all the way to Stern Street. Secondly, the Hampton Court presentation, I attended the planning board meeting last week, has given no consideration to trash. Right now, that building uses a trash dumpster, several of them, on the access road. And so those 35 cars are stopped on the days that the trash is picked up. I can't quite imagine trash trying to get into that private access, cars trying to get out. That seems a very major issue.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, hi. My name is Bob Gilbert. I live at 1243 Beacon. I'm one of the trustees at 1243 Beacon. It's a 9-story building, by the way. I heard some reference to it being 10 or maybe 11. It's a 9-story building. The concerns that I have revolve around some of the things that I've heard... The concerns that I have revolve around some of the things that I've heard already. Beacon and St. Paul is a very, very busy intersection, busier than one might expect. And I know from my window, I overlook that intersection. At all hours of the day and almost all hours of the night, there's a long line of cars extending up St. Paul Street, waiting to get across Beacon Street, and waiting to make turns and so on and so forth. And if a building, the size of which we are talking here, is built there, I think the problem will become unacceptable. It will become intolerable. Even now, it's difficult for people to make right turns and left turns because of all the traffic. Even now, the traffic extends up toward Longwood Avenue, Sewell Avenue, and then sometimes even beyond that. And so I think it's important that that give, that we give that some consideration. It seems to me that such a high building at the corner of Beacon and St. Paul is an extreme addition to the neighborhood. A smaller building might fit in well, but an 11- or 12-story building at an intersection, a major intersection, on one side of the street, there's the Holiday Inn, and they want to increase their size as well. And there's already enormous traffic from the Holiday Inn and traffic-related problems with the Holiday Inn. So I would just like to emphasize those concerns, because I have heard some reference being made to them. But I live with these all of the time, all of these problems, all of the time. And this is only going to make things worse, to have a high-rise building, an extremely high-rise building, on such a small plot of land. If you stand on, if you stand on St. Paul Street and look into this structure, you wouldn't imagine that a gigantic building would fit there. You wouldn't even imagine that you could double the size of that building and not have really serious traffic problems and parking problems and exit and entrance problems. And with the size of the building that we'll talk about, I think the problems will be intolerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. Mr. Gilbert.
Joe Geller for Stan Tech Consulting, representing Chestnut Realty. I just want to be clear to the board that some of the comments you made about this site being very well-located for transit-oriented development is one of the reasons that we're proposing the scale of the project we are proposing. And the traffic impacts, which we will have to study as part of the process, and a traffic report will get done, a traffic study and analysis will all get done. But just to be clear, there are 14 additional parking spaces being added to the project. So the amount of cars coming in and out can only get increased by 14 additional cars. And that's purposeful, because we believe that the site is a very good site to address transit-oriented development, which is why we're proposing it.
What's the delta in the number of units between what's there now versus what's being proposed?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
Sorry, 53.
Fifty-three, okay. Anyone else wish to speak? And then Ms. Brown will be after this lady.
Marjorie Raden, I live at 150 St. Paul, which is the corner of St. Paul and Sewell.
Why don't you, can you point?
Okay.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
So I'm on the corner of St. Paul and Sewell. And my major concern is the size of it. The height of it is just too high for what everybody has said, primarily, I think, the first person who spoke. I agree with his things and the issue of traffic, because traffic on St. Paul is a nightmare. And I think when you start adding this many units, it's going to just get progressively worse.
Thank you. Ms. Brown, welcome. We're seeing a lot of you.
Long time no see. I hadn't planned on saying anything tonight, and the presentation, it inspired me to get up. So, very quickly, I think there are problems, you know, with the 40B aspects of this. I don't know what's going to happen. I think part of that building is covered under historic preservation laws. I'm not sure how that gets addressed as part of the 40B process. Select person Green raised the whole rental rates issue. You know, it's a dirty secret in Brookline. You can call anything, you know, moderate income and make that proposal, but at the end of the day, it could still be $3,000 a month. So I think that that's not part of the 40B, but I just want to get that on the record. Green infrastructure. There's going to be some huge stormwater runoff issues here. I heard nothing dealing with how stormwater was going to be addressed. And that's as basic an environmental issue as we can get to. And I do believe that that's one of those matters covered under 40B. I think that the siting of the HVAC, based on what I heard, is, part of my occupational background, you know, that poses some real security issues. There are very few buildings these days that are actually putting their HVAC in the basements because you leave yourself vulnerable to all kinds of issues.
Is the HVAC location specified on there?
I thought that's what I heard, that some of the HVAC was going to be in the basement.
Some utilities are on the HVAC.
Which utilities? I mean, it's still part of the same problem.
Potentially a boiler or a service now?
That's, and that's what I'm getting at. That's potentially a problem. Safety, I almost got run over this evening coming from Trader Joe's at St. Paul, crossing over. There are kids every morning that make that walk, and I didn't hear anything about making some sort of concessions or providing some safe access to and from school during those certain hours of the day. I don't know whether it's as a result of setbacks or what have you. I also think that noise, it could, and most likely will, be an issue, especially during the construction process. I didn't hear anything about what kind of mitigation would be undertaken there. So, that's my...
Yeah, that, those very detailed things would be the next phase, you know, mitigation noise during construction. This, yeah.
I got it, but some of these are kind of the nuts and bolts of 40B. And so I just wanted to, because I may not come to another one of these meetings, but I did want to get those out there.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay. So, I think, trying to summarize some of what we've heard and the comments we've gotten from the Preservation Commission and the Planning Board, which, this is actually the first one of these that we've gotten comments like this from both of them.
I agree, I think it's extraordinary.
So I think we should incorporate into our consideration, certainly, we're attaching the letters that we got from the Planning Board and the Preservation Commission, but we should, in our letter, amplify some of the contents, especially the sensitivity of the historic nature of Beacon Street. It's kind of the main street of town, one of the main streets, and it's, you know, a very sensitive location. The Planning Board uses a word that I've never seen before, a facadectomy.
A word that does not exist.
But it gets the point across.
The word is facetomy. Facodomy.
Facodomy?
It could be a Scribner's error.
No. Facadectomy, well, whatever.
Yeah.
The point is...
And it's not taking away, it's preserving the facade and building something behind it. So, facedectomy means taking out.
Right. And I think the, our letter should comment on the nature of the application and the fact that it's difficult to get a sense of the project, which makes commenting on it very, very difficult, if not impossible, to provide intelligent comments, and we would hope that mass housing requires resubmission. In terms of the items that we've heard from the public, much has already been incorporated into the Planning Board and the Preservation Commission's comments, which we're going to incorporate into our own. The site-specific items I think we should comment on is the safety of the curb cuts and the potential limited site distance, especially as it affects pedestrians on the sidewalks leaving the driveway. And that was one of the first comments that we heard, and comments on the setback, setbacks and the relationship to the neighborhood. And considering, we always add comments about the requirements of shadow studies, but we should indicate specifically that the property at 12, the shadow effect on the property at 1243 Beacon and the surrounding properties to that site need to be considered. Special considerations should be given to what's happening on Marshall Street and the trash, trash management, and the relationship of the project to the busy intersection at St. Paul and Beacon Street. I think, too, that the letter should indicate kind of the sentiments that I've heard amongst the board and even some of the neighbors, that some development on that site, you know, could be appropriate, but this is just a bit much for that site.
I'd like to ask a question, because the Planning Board seems to think that the proposal has described as an addition to the 1900 building with five stories added on the top. Is that correct?
No.
So, how did the Cleaning Board get this idea?
That comment was made at some point during the meeting, and it seems to have taken a life of its own following the meeting. I'm not sure where that comment was made. We've never asserted that it was an addition.
Okay. So you have no plans at all to change the structure of that building? It's a wood-framed building with masonry on the outside, we would imagine, since buildings... You have no plans and...
No, it's, no, it's not wood-framed.
It's not wood-framed?
No, it's masonry, some steel. It's a mix of different materials.
From 1900?
That's steel.
But you have no plans to change the top, the way the top is, I think they call that crenelation.
Cornice line?
Yep.
We're proposing to preserve the facade of the building, and so the facade includes that castle-like cornice line, or whatever the Planning Board referred to it as.
So I guess, what you're running into is the fact that what you've submitted can be misinterpreted, and that's problematic. So, that's, so, I guess that's the source of what you're hearing tonight. Anything else that I missed?
I've got two comments.
Yes.
One, one original thought and one sort of clarification. I think we should require a traffic study as well. And I'm particularly interested in the question of circulation out of the driveway, and particularly whether left-hand turns should be allowed out of that driveway. So to proceed up the hill on St. Paul rather than down the hill towards Beacon. But, again, it'll be a full traffic study, so that and other questions, I'm sure, will be answered.
Well, I agree with you that that is a problematic turn. I mean, I happen to go down St. Paul a lot and to get to my neighborhood, and it is very problematic when people are exiting and entering that driveway, and the left turn would be a significant problem, I would think, out of the driveway.
Yeah, that's, I think, why I want to see a traffic engineer take a look at it. My other comment is I want to echo something that Ms. Brown said. I think that there should be some disclosure investigation of how stormwater is going to be handled, given the fact that we are proposing, Chestnut Realty is proposing to alter the, a large piece of property, which, again, is impermeable right now, but certainly it's going to be built up. So, where is the stormwater going to go? How is it going to be handled? And how are we going to prevent flooding or pooling, should construction take place?
Anything else? Okay, so the next step is, we'll review the letter and approve the letter next week, and then that goes to mass housing, and we're on our way. Maybe we'll see you again, or if mass housing does what we suggest. Maybe not. So, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments that were very, very helpful. So we're right on time for the next item on the agenda. Has that ever happened before? Oh, and by the way, we can, you can submit written comments to us until next Tuesday. And they would go to, where would they go?
Planning Department.
To the Planning Department. The address is on the website.
Email?
Yes. Yeah, email. That's the best way. Thank you. So next up is some grants of location. First up is Eversource, and Eversource has one, two, three, four, five grants of location. So the first one is on, excuse me, Hammond Street, and it's for a conduit from an existing manhole for going 180, well, the existing manhole is 186 feet north of Hammond Pond Parkway, a distance of 112 feet to 962 Hammond Street, and this is to service our new fire station, our fire training center. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Why don't you introduce yourself?
Hello, my name is Chanel Grant, I'm from Eversource Energy.
Okay.
Yes.
And why don't you tell us what's going on here?
Okay, so what we're doing, yes, they're building, a building there, and they need power, just for new service. I guess it's a new training facility for the fire department.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's just brand-new service.
So this is, it's going to go from a manhole in the street, off the street, onto our property to the...
Yes, it meets right at the property.
Right, okay. Is there going to be some impact?
Let's see the information.
Yeah, I'm looking for the sheet. So why don't, why don't you just tell us whether there's going to be some impact on traffic and all that kind of stuff?
No traffic impact at all. The manhole is just right, right in the middle of the street, and they already started digging the service, and we're just going to come in and install conduit and just, and just give them power right on the side of, right on the side of the building. And they already started the construction.
So, can I, can I ask, this is going to involve tearing up the street, as I understand it, in order to...
Yes.
Install these. So how much coordination have you had with National Grid about the gas leaks in this area?
We have not, we don't have anything to do with National Grid on this.
Well, yes, you do, because the street is being torn up, and if there are gas leaks, it makes sense that National Grid comes in and fixes those while the street is torn up. It's no sense in letting them tear it up at a different time after we, after... It's no sense in letting them tear it up at a different time after we, after you've gone to the trouble of tearing it up and fixing it. That's just a wasted expense.
Okay.
So I would hope that there is more coordination between Eversource and National Grid on this issue. I think it's an important issue, and I know that some members of this board are concerned about it.
Okay, so just to understand your question, you mean you want to know how close we are to the gas lines?
She's just asking what you call National Grid, and let them know that you're doing work in the area, and tell them if they have a gas leak, they should come and repair it while you're putting new service in.
Oh, yes, we would definitely do that, yes.
And you should document that in some sort of an email or letter to them, so that they are, you are on record as having asked them to...
Okay, okay, just inform them that they'll be on standby if there's a problem.
And maybe Mr. Ditto can help you with coordination.
Okay.
How long is this work going to take place? Is it going to take, it looks like from the information sheet we have in front of us, it's about a 30-day job. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm looking at the map.
This is Harvard Avenue or Harvard Street?
No, no, it's Hammond.
Hammond Street.
This is down by the fires, the fire train.
Page 94 in our packet.
94?
Yeah, 962 Hammond Street.
So you're not looking for a noise waiver by law, there's no road closures?
No, not at all.
And work will be done during regular work hours?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this particular item? Okay, I see none. Okay, let's move on to Pearl Street.
Okay.
And this is a 31-foot grant of location, starting from 192 feet north of Washington Street, and this is to serve Brookline Place.
Yes.
That's an area where there's a lot of activity going on right now. And I'm looking for the...
822.
822.
So again, this looks like it's a 30-day job, no road closures or parking restrictions, and no service interruptions. Is that accurate to the best of your understanding?
Yes, and it's inside of the construction zone.
Again, I have the same question, an issue about gas leaks. There are a number of gas leaks in that area.
Okay.
And Mr. Ditto may know more about that, but I believe that National Grid should be actually contacted and a reply by, you know, written contact and a reply received with their documentation as to whether they're going to come and fix it, or they're not, you know, they're not...
Come fix it.
Whether they're, if they claim that there is no leak.
No leaks, okay.
Okay.
Anyone from the public who wishes to speak on the Pearl Street grant of location? Okay, I see none. And now we're at Harvard Street, and this is from around...
That's the one I was looking at before?
Beale Street, yeah. This is a 65-foot grant of location to 384 Harvard Street. This is the KI?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. What page is this?
88.
Eight what?
8-8.
Eight-eight. This is all scrambled. Okay, and this one, too, is daytime only, no road closures. There's a lot of construction activity going on in that area.
Yeah, the difference here is it looks like there is service interruption, so...
Four to eight hours at night for six customers. And then there'll be a momentary outage for all of Harvard Street. That's going to be interesting. And you're looking to be done by the end of June?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is a rush job. We're going to rush and do it and get it done right away.
Right.
Again, same issue.
With the gas, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Ditto can help.
I'll coordinate with him.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Anyone from the public wish to speak on the Harvard Street grant of location? I see none. And Leister Street?
Okay.
And this is a nine, a nine-foot grant of location, starting 262 feet southwest of Seaver Street to 83 Leister Street.
829 in our packet.
Thank you. Are you keeping track?
Again, this looks like it's daytime work, no noise bylaw waiver, no road closures or parking restrictions, but it does look like there will be a service interruption, although no details are given. So I'm curious to know what the service interruption is going to consist of.
Okay, so what they're going to do, there's, the conduit has already been installed on the pole, and all we're going to do is, you know, have the wires go down through the conduit, and it's just brand-new service, and it's pretty simple.
So some customers are going to lose service for a period of time. How many customers and how long is that service interruption going to last?
Okay, it really, it's not going to be that long, maybe six hours?
And is that during the day or in the evening?
During the day.
And you'll notify those customers that they're going to lose service for six hours?
Yeah, the others, yes.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on the Leiser Street grant of location? I see none. And now Independence Drive.
I'm sorry, again, I have the same concern.
Same thing with the gas, okay, with the gas leak.
Okay. So this is a familiar intersection to us, right at Hancock Village.
815 for those following along at home. So it's an upgrade to existing service. It doesn't look like there'll be road closures or parking restrictions, and it does not appear as though there'll be service interruptions, so I assume all that is accurate.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any questions from the board? And any...
Yes, I have the same concerns. I believe that there are gas leaks on Independence, and so, again, I want you to, I think you should document your request to National Grid and receive that request, receive the answer to that before you begin work on this.
Okay.
And please include Mr. Ditto on the correspondence, so that the town will know that this has happened.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any member of the public wish to speak on this one? This is Independence Drive, and is this the last of the national, of the Eversource?
I do have one question about the Independence Drive service. I see on the engineering drawing that there's a concrete manhole being installed. Is that going to be in the tree lawn?
No, it's going to be right on the sidewalk, so they can have 24-hour access to it.
So in the middle of the sidewalk or towards the edge of the sidewalk where the tree lawn butts the sidewalk?
Okay, it's going to be in the middle of the sidewalk.
Okay. Okay, sure.
Will this create challenges to people using the sidewalk on a day-to-day basis? Does this exist elsewhere without a problem?
Yes, it does. Yes, we have similar sidewalk manholes all over, yes.
And it's just a manhole, it's not one of those venting poles, the...
It's like a hatch.
Okay.
So I will move that we approve the petitions of Nstar, an electric company doing business at Eversource Energy, for permission to construct a location for such a line of conduits and manholes with the necessary cables therein under, therein under the following public ways. Hammond Street, conduit northerly from existing manhole 19816, approximately 186 feet north of Hammond Pond Parkway, a distance of 112 feet to 962 Hammond Street. Pearl Street, northerly from existing manhole 2543, approximately 192 feet north of Washington Street, a distance of about 31 feet to 2 Brookline Place. Harvard Street, southerly from existing manhole 3667, at Beale Street, a distance of 65 feet of conduit to 384 Harvard Street. Leister Street, conduit southeasterly from pole 96/8, approximately 262 feet southwest of Seaver Street, a distance of nine feet to 83 Leister Street. Independence Drive, conduit southeasterly and southeasterly from existing manhole 2610 at the intersection of Jerry Road, a distance of about 30 feet to a new manhole numbered 3406, with a condition that coordination with the gas company... That, how do we phrase that?
That we notify the gas company?
Notify, notify and coordinate with the gas company?
And provide...
With National Grid.
Written, a written notification to the gas company, and do not proceed without a written reply, so that we know that they are aware of this, and we'd like...
So Mr. Barkus, who I see from the gas company, make sure you reply, so they proceed. Right? Okay, thank you.
Well, can we tie them proceeding on a letter from another company like that?
I don't know.
I'm not sure that that's reasonable.
Well, at least National Grid can tell us whether there are gas leaks in that area and what their plan is for fixing those gas leaks. And it may be that Eversource completes its work and leaves, but National Grid will then have the responsibility to repair the gas leaks and will take on the cost of opening the street and closing it again.
So it'll be a notification?
Yes. So Eversource's responsibility is to contact them, get the information, as opposed to holding up the work until they get it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, the motion is a notification condition. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to our friends at National Grid. Some of this looks familiar.
May I make a comment? This is Notice Trade 30, as public here...
Oh, is it? Oh!
So I'm wondering whether, take our other business, the last item, number 12...
Yeah, yeah, because we shouldn't start before when we notice it. Sorry, folks.
So we'll take number 12.
So we'll take number 12, then we'll get out early. Okay, so this is, this item is discussing follow-up actions to town meeting.
Good evening. You all should have received in your packet a memo from me relaying some of the action items that came out of this most recent town meeting that we had. You'll see a table on the first page of the memo that summarizes all the Warren articles. The first article that we have is Article 7. Although there wasn't a formal resolution by town meeting, the advisory committee has actually provided a resolution and has been urging the select board to consider forming a committee for long-term planning. So just flagging that as an issue that we talked about...
Right, and I committed publicly?
Yeah, I think the whole board did.
Right, the board committed publicly, and then I confirmed that commitment publicly at town meeting in my budget speech. After Mr. Lynn Jones, in his budget speech, chided us for not doing it yet. I then followed up with a, "Yeah, we're going to do it, so we're going to do it." So we're going to need a charge, and that's something we have to think really long and hard on, because I think this is, this is going to be a real important committee, looking at our policies and trying to think about strategies to address, well, one, you know, to determine, you know, what is the nature of our structural deficit, and then, you know, potential strategies for attacking it. One of the comments that I think came out of the discussion that wasn't in, well, no, I was about to talk about the CPA, but that's, that's the next committee. Okay.
Just to say, Mr. Chair, that we, as staff, are supportive of this initiative as well. We see it as an opportunity to address a whole, a lot of things that different committees over time have done. We can commit to providing a draft charge in two weeks. I think I previously told you, next week, but it'll have to be two weeks because of some scheduling issues.
I want to, when Mr. Lynn Jones came to initially impart this message to us at one of our regularly scheduled meetings, I had observed that in 2014, there was some conversation about whether consultant resources were appropriate for these types of investigations going forward. So to the extent that that hasn't been part of the conversation, I would just ask that we mull that over and think about whether the allocation of some dollars to have some professional support from outside of the town might possibly lead to a better result here and a more comprehensive and perhaps even faster conclusion to this committee process. Not saying we need it or don't, but I think we just need to think about it.
Yeah, and also, Key is going to be getting some really good people on this. A number of people have approached me already, raising their hands, so I'll put the word out that we'll be looking for good folks who especially are skilled in the area of I don't even think, well, experience in municipal finance or government finance would be a plus, but I don't know if it's, as long as we have some people with that background, and then some, you know, operational management and organizational strategy experience would be important. What's interesting, I think, is, you know, we hear a lot of people say, oh, you know, private sector, you know, let's bring experience, the experience of the private sector into the public sector and try to, you know, make organizations more efficient, and that's good to a point, and I think...
The point of bankruptcy, that they can do and we can't.
Right. But also, you know, a public sector organization is very, very different. Its motivations are very different than private sector. We're not in it for the profit. We're in it to provide services and better the community. So the motivation is different, and then also the pressures on us are different, come from different directions and different motivations, and it's not just financial, and you kind of have to live in the public sector for a while to kind of experience it and see how it's different. But I think, you know, looking at past committees of this type, we've had kind of a mix of high-level public sector managers, high-level private sector managers, and then folks experienced in finance, and then in delivery of services... and then in delivery of services of various types. And I think we'd be looking for that similar mix.
Yeah, there are a lot of consultants out there who specialize in municipal finance and, you know, bring the type of skills that we're really looking for. Matter of fact, we should look at... I'm not recommending them. I just think we should look at UMass Boston. You know, they have, you know, experts in there. I forgot what the name of the...
Cal Center.
Right. That you may be able to offer at least some guidance, some help in something like this. At probably a cheaper price than we'd get from bringing in some hot shot private companies.
Okay. I think we've, for the moment, beaten that one to a pulp.
The next couple of items down below, Article 22. I wanted to just confirm with the board that the town clerk has sent the information off to the Department of Revenue in order to enable us to collect the local option taxes in a timely manner once we have new recreational facilities up and running.
Before you... I learned something very interesting, that there was a deadline that I wasn't aware of.
Forty-eight hours after the vote, and I emailed him the very next day.
And the other deadline was, we needed to approve this by May 31 in order to be able to collect the tax in the first quarter of the new fiscal year. If town meeting had gone on beyond May 31 and we approved it on June 1st, assuming NEDA was approved in the first quarter, we would lose out on that tax revenue. But, being that town meeting was especially efficient this time around and it was the second night of town meeting and it happened before May 31st, we made the deadline and if NEDA is approved sometime during the first quarter and they can open, we will in fact be able to collect the tax. So that's good.
I should note that for fiscal 19, we would only be getting 10 months of revenue because of the timing. So, in September, we'll be getting July and August revenue. And so, next year, we'll get a full year's worth. That's the schedule that was sent out.
Well, none of the potential taxes that we're getting from NEDA for recreationals built into the budget.
Correct.
So it's all from a budgetary perspective at this point until we get a handle on how much to expect. It's kind of...
It's a little too premature.
Yeah, and it's kind of gravy beyond our budget. If that's the right word to describe it.
Yes. Notice has also been sent to the Attorney General expediting the articles that were passed by town meeting around marijuana as well. So, that's underway as well.
So, just to the board, I'm going to ask, not tonight, but I'd like folks to think about who might help out with some of these committees.
The next committee... Well, Article 23 is... The process is a little bit underway. The school committee ad hoc subcommittee has been doing some of this exploration.
That's the devotion school.
Correct. And I will also be providing notice to the naming committee to gear up, because they'll be reviewing the outcome of that committee once their process is done.
And just for the board's information, if you go to the naming committee website, the appointments are kind of... Some of the appointments have expired. So...
Typical.
Right, and it's a committee that, you know, it kind of works in spurts when there's something for them to do. And now they have a big something to do, or they will have a big something to do once the school committee does its thing. So, I guess that's going to be through the fall, so the naming committee would have something... Would become active again toward the end of the fall into the beginning of the winter, getting ready for the town meeting warrant. But, you know, I think we should look at the, you know, at the appointments and make sure that they're current and the folks who are serving on it have current... They've been renewed appropriately. And if anyone wishes to join the naming committee, I would encourage them to apply. It's a five-person committee with one alternate. Four of the five, by statute, are members of various boards and commissions. There's one from the school committee, Parks and Rec, preservation...
Advisory.
And advisory. So, we would go to those boards for them to nominate, you know, a member. It has to be a member of those boards under the statute. And then, so there are two positions that are citizens that aren't affiliated with board. One is the alternate and then the other is... Who's currently the chair. So, okay. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Article 24 is the land bank warrant article, which asks the select board to establish a committee. So, we'll need to come up with a charge for that committee as well as membership.
Right. Fortunately, on that one, the resolution passed by town meeting gives us a lot of guidance as to the charge. The only addition that I have is the question of, should we throw into the mix consideration of the CPA, which tries to do a lot of the same things as a land bank, but it's a different funding source and has what is now a very small match. It's down to something like 11%. We had the CPA on the ballot in the mid...
2006.
Yeah, 2006. I served on the committee that formulated the ballot question. I've been on... Since 2000, I've been on every tax-raising committee. It's amazing.
I'm surprised that you admit that out loud.
Yeah, yeah.
You're not seeking reelection.
Right, there you go.
Tax the Winsky.
So, my thinking is, we include the consideration of the CPA. And I think that was kind of one of the comments we got from the speakers at the town meeting. So, but that makes it... Gives the committee more to think about. So, okay.
The next, Article 25, is just a reminder to us that we need to file special legislation as a result of this article. We have to file the home rule petition, which we will do shortly. The next article is actually a moderators committee, but I note that Ben volunteered to serve. They're going to be having their organizational...
Volunteer to voluntold?
Volunteer may be too strong, Howard.
Tell me about it.
I'm on the committee. We'll leave it at that.
Couldn't think of a better person.
The next three articles, 28 through 30, also ask for a select board committee.
I know who's going to head that one.
Yeah, I opened my big mouth.
The Green Commission.
The Green Commission, right. So, I'll put together a charge and a work plan on that and at some point, we can announce it and see if we can solicit some people to join as members. That's fairly straightforward.
Okay.
The next committee is the non-electronic communication committee, which also looks for a charge. And we have two members that have already quasi-volunteered. The two of the petitioners...
No, it wasn't quasi.
I didn't want to commit them unless they wanted to reconsider, but...
They volunteered.
They did.
We pinned them down.
Yep, so we just need a formalized charge and rounding out a membership for that committee, as well as a select board designee.
Okay.
Article 34, I think Ben was at the Memorial Day service and I assume that the resolution was read.
It was read.
In advance of town meeting's approval, actually.
Neil Gordon is a bold man.
It was made clear that town meeting hadn't approved it yet. But it was expected.
I would have... I think it was a safe bet. Okay, so we've got some charge writing to do and then, when we approve the charges, we'll think about who... You know, I'm of the view that not every select persons committee needs a select person on it. I think it should have... It should have a select person... At the very least, a select person liaison, so we can talk about, as the charges come before us, whether or not a select person should be on the committee. So, for example, the Indigenous Day Celebrations Committee doesn't have a select person on it. But, yes, but we can talk about that. Okay. So now, it's 8:34, so I think we've run...
Other things to talk about.
Okay, so now, we're back to grants of locations and we're back on Milton Road and Cypress Street and Cushing Road, something we talked about, what, a month ago?
No, in March, March 27.
Really? Let's see how time flies. So, Mr. Barkus, is that you? Tell us what's going... Why are you back here?
It is a beautiful town.
We're just so happy to see you, Mr. Barkus.
Thank you. John Barkus, for those that don't know me, Community Customer Manager for National Grid. I represent National Grid and also for the work that goes around the town of Brookline. So, March 27th, National Grid was here. I was fortunate enough to be on vacation. But after some due diligence work, we came up with some information regarding grade-three leaks that was requested and we got the approval for a replacement of a reg station, replacing the regulator station at Cypress and Boylston and moving it to Milton Road. Unfortunately, after the town arborist, Tom Brady, did a site visit with National Grid representatives, the area that has now been selected and recommended is at the corner of Cushing and Milton Road. So, we're looking for permission. Instead of going in the first location selected, which was approximately 35 Milton Road, we're now looking to go on Cushing Road at approximately 25... 45 Cushing Road, right at the corner of Cushing and Milton Road. 23, thank you. So, that's why we're here now. We didn't plan on this coming up, but there were some trees that were concerned. And with that, we asked the town arborist to give us his blessing to a new location and this location was selected and also with the town DPW as well.
So, Mr. Brady has looked at this and...
Correct. So, we're going to also implement that in any other projects that we try to start doing in the town to make sure that he's incorporated in any site visits.
Good idea.
We do have a good relationship with Mr. Brady. He does come out to us a lot.
Everyone does.
He does a fine job, actually, so...
He does.
You can't complain about somebody that does a great job. So, at his recommendation and also the town of Brookline DPW, we've now upgraded our plants and redesigned. And now, we're proposing that, you know, we just transition with all the same recommendations from the board, that we get the approval to be able to relocate this regulator station replacement to the corner of Cushing and Milton Road and sidewalk.
Okay. So, the impacts...
The impacts are very similar. The only difference would be is we're going approximately 40 to 50 feet onto Cushing Road versus before, we were making the hard turn down Milton Road heading towards Cypress.
So, you're coming off of Route 9?
Yeah.
Pass Milton... On Milton, Milton does a jog.
Yeah, Milton does a jog to the left and we're going to go about 40 feet, approximately 40 to 50 feet max, onto Cushing Road. And then, the pipe will continue going down Milton Road and then into Cypress.
So it's going to go out and then back and then back down.
So, it's the 22-pound line system and then from the regulator station, it'll go out as a low-pressure water column system.
Okay. I see some neighbors here.
Correct. We also did have a... Back April, I think it was around April 10th, we had a small neighborhood meeting at the request of the neighbors. We went out there, we talked about pretty much in detail for about a half hour, 45 minutes. I think we would have been out there longer if the weather cooperated, but fortunately, the weather did not cooperate. No, I'm just kidding. But everyone else has a sense of humor. But, again, you know, I'm willing to keep in contact with the neighbors and be their liaison through National Grid if they do have any concerns, you know, and we'll just move forward with this the best we can and, you know, try to be a good company to the neighbors and also the town of Brookline and do the right thing for them.
So, can I make a comment here?
Go right ahead.
On March 27th, we attached certain conditions to the grant of location. Those... There were three such conditions. I'll skip over the first one for a minute. But the second one was that the work is to be reformed Monday to Friday, 9 to 5.
Correct.
And there would be no deviation from that.
Correct.
So, I believe we should attach that condition to this grant of location, since it's essentially the same.
Yep. That's what we would suggest also.
That the disturbed roads are resurfaced, milled, and overlaid for half the road in consultation with the town engineer, who may require, in his judgment, a full resurfacing of the road.
Correct. So, right now, we've committed to doing half the road and then, if need be, by the DPW, we would do the full restoration, if needed, you know, to be done. So, we understand the...
Okay, then let me go back to the first condition, which was that before you commence work, you would submit a plan for repairing all the gas leaks in the town with a timetable and a reasonable amount of time for the Director of Engineering to address... With a priority to address the super emitters. Now, I understand that you have submitted a letter to us about this. Let me come up with a copy of that, if you'll bear with me one second. I have so many pieces of paper here. It was dated on May 5th and signed by you. And to be honest with you, I think that it's not really the kind of plan that at least I, who requested this condition, was thinking of. It's not really very detailed in terms of where the leaks are and by what... When you're going to fix them. By my count, you've said that there are 209 leaks that you're going to be fixing in... Within two years, but you also, I'm sure, recognize that you're not going to be working in December, January, February, and March, the heart of the winter, most likely. Not necessarily, but most likely. So, that leaves eight months to fix, you know, 200 leaks. And, you know, I can't envision that you're really going to be out there fixing 25 leaks a month.
Yeah, I don't believe the letter indicates that we're going to be repairing 200-plus leaks within the next 12 months.
Well, I think you said category 2, the medium-volume leaks, would be eliminated by main replacement or repair within two years of being classified.
Right. So, what it is, is there's a lot of leaks throughout our system, not just in Brookline, but throughout our entire system. So, as the letter indicates, there's a pile... So, National Grid is regulated to fix leaks. And we're also regulated to do other types of work, you know, main replacements and mandated work. So, we understand as National Grid that there's a lot of leaks out there, grade-three leaks, that we've never been regulated to replace. So, how are we going to do that in a certain period of time? We had to come up with a plan. So, between all the gash... So between all the gas utilities within the state of Massachusetts, they came up with a plan to identify grade three leaks and categorize them with three different levels. So let's call them level one, two, and three. So a large volume leak, medium volume leak, and a small volume leak. And then after those leaks have been identified, the large volume leaks would be replaced within 12 months and then the medium volume leak has a X amount of time, I apologize, I'd have to read through my notes, and then the small volume leak would be then scheduled to be replaced through our main replacement program. So this plan was submitted to the DPU for approval. National Grid has been proactive and they've started training people on this equipment to measure these leaks and we've started the pilot program to go out there and identify these leaks, not just in Brookline, but throughout our whole system. Once this is identified and this is approved through the DPU, then we can go after all these leaks. It's not that we want to not replace them, because we do want to replace them. We want to make sure that we have a safe environment and our system is working adequately. So, this here, I couldn't give you a schedule, I'd be lying to you if I gave you a schedule. So this pilot program is identifying the leaks for us and we have put Brookline on the top of the list to go after, at the recommendation of me. I had to go in there and say, we really need to look at Brookline. Brookline is very concerned, we want to make sure.
Basically, we were ready to join you a year ago and you refused, so.
So again.
In the pilot program, but go ahead.
Yeah, so we definitely are working towards this pilot program to identify these leaks and categorize them and go after them. So I couldn't tell you which ones right now. We don't have this data, I don't have this data to be able to tell you X amount of leaks, but I do have the number of leaks in the town. We're now piloting this program to go after and identify which leaks that we would fix within 12 months, two years, or during our main replacement project. That is the best information tonight that I can give you and until the pilot program is done and also the DPW either approves or modifies the proposal throughout the utility companies, that's, you know, I'm just being honest, that's, that's all I can tell you right now. If I had a schedule and said, we're going to fix these tomorrow, I would tell you that, but I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to stand up here and try to pull something over your eyes, I'm going to tell you the truth.
Well, I have printouts of leaks that have been identified apparently by National Grid.
Correct.
Reported by you and put on these maps.
Correct. So, I don't know if that's the direct one right off of our website, but if it is so, then that is true and again, we have just over 200 grade three leaks in the town, but we've never been, we've never had to, we've never been mandated to fix them, so it's almost like people.
Do you have to be mandated to fix them before you do?
Not always. So we go after the nuisance leaks, the ones that come back, we go after the ones that have a lot of complaints, we go after the ones the town would recommend us going after, but we have to go after ones, the grade ones that are in emergency. We have to go after the grade twos that we are mandated to fix, but we have just so much work that we're mandated and regulated to fix that we're trying to come up with a solution to go after the grade three leaks. It's not that we don't want to, we want to, but we can't just say we're going to put all of our resources on these 200 leaks because we have more than 200 leaks throughout our system and we have a lot of other stuff that we have to do that we're mandated, otherwise, you know, we look at consequences, just like anybody else would.
I want to be clear, though, the 200 leaks that you're talking about are in Brookline.
Correct, yes. I'm definitely not denying that.
Okay.
Well, I, I think we need a condition about this.
Okay.
I don't, I'm still, I'm not happy, I'm not, I don't feel that the letter addresses the question and I think that the, that the condition should say that National Grid, before commencing work, shall submit a detailed plan with specific location, I mean, you have them right here.
But again, we understand we have them, but we can't commit to that today, so.
You can't commit to this?
We can't, no, I can commit to the leaks that we have, but I can't commit to fixing them. So I can't give you a schedule on fixing them like you requested. After the, after the one was approved, after the letter that I submitted and the Milton Road reg station was approved, we're still working on trying to come up with a solution to go after and come up with a scheduled timeframe to fix those.
And how long will that be?
The pilot program is for this season.
And when will the pilot program be done?
So hopefully, again, in my letter, I recommended that we come back in late construction season, so I gave a timeline verbally of hopefully August, September, to come back and formally try to identify what our plan would be.
So are, are there any leaks in the general vicinity of this work?
Yes.
So, in this general vicinity, that's a wide range question, but on Milton Road and Cushion Road where this job is being completed, there is no leaks identified right now.
But isn't there one at the corner of Boylston and Cypress?
So that is a.
And at the corner of Cypress and Milton?
East, that's East Milton and Cypress, there's a grade three leak there. The engineering team right now is looking at a main replacement project. The problem is, is we've done quite an extensive lot of work on Cypress already, so they were concerned that we might get denied doing a main replacement out there, so we might have to just replace the leak. The grade two at Cypress and Boylston is on schedule to be completed this construction season. That's one of the ones that we're mandated to replace.
So you, you can, so that one's on schedule, so you can commit to fixing that one?
Correct, yeah.
And you can tell us a timetable for fixing?
I don't have that, but I could get that back for you. I'd have to look, that's probably going to become a state permit, so it's just a matter of the state permitting.
So, before you do this work, you'll have to have a state permit at any rate?
No, we're not, that's not in the area of this job where that leak is.
There's been a lot of digging over there.
It's in the neighborhood of that job, but it's not, we're not going to be actually digging in that area. If we're digging in that area, we would replace that leak, we would fix that leak, yes. But until when, we either have the state permit, we cannot, and I do not have the state permit in my hand today to go out there and fix it tomorrow.
So the DPU has to approve the overarching plan to make these repairs. When is the DPU anticipating, or when do you anticipate the DPU taking some action on the plan that's been submitted?
So the DPU should be approving that. It should have already been reviewed and should be in the process of being approved or modified this month. And then we'd have to go back and take our data from all of our research that we've done with these, identifying these leaks. So, again, that's why I asked, there's, you know, a lot of things going on, there's a lot of moving pieces and that's why I asked for the August, September timeline to be able to formally address the board and identify what we would like to be able to do. You know, again, I know I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I, I haven't lied to you, I'm not going to lie to you, so I'm going to do the best I can to make sure that, you know, whatever I commit to gets done correctly. This is my second construction season with the Town of Brookline. Last construction, we had a lot of work and, you know, there's still a lot of work and I really did my best to try to find out as much information as I could on these grade three leaks that you're concerned about and, you know, fortunately that there's already a plan in place so that timeframe otherwise would have been delayed, but luckily we have a pilot program already, we're being proactive. We're training our employees to investigate these leaks with the new equipment and we're out there already taking data and measuring these leaks.
So now you're saying that, that you will have a plan by August, September?
That's what I'm hoping for, but otherwise, we're going to formally address what our plan is. So if we have a plan to fix these leaks, then hopefully by August, September, we would be able to identify them all, give you the formal plan, but otherwise formally present what our plan of action is for the grade three leaks in the Town of Brookline.
Can I open it up to the public? Does anyone wish to speak to the Milton Road? Ms. Drake, welcome.
Another rainy day.
Yeah.
Let me step out of your way.
Hi, Cindy Drake, 32 Milton Road. I want to start with a slight correction because the conditions that we had actually, there were five of them, so the conditions that were red were really applying to Norfolk Road and Middlesex Road. I've got a printout of the minutes.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
So if you just want to double check, we did have the first one being that National Grid will in fact take care of the leaks, that's been discussed at length. The second one was that there any excavation will be done under the supervision of the Town's Tree Warden. The question that I, do I pose the question to you guys?
No.
The question that I have here is there is a tree on that corner. I'm assuming that where the vault's going to go is going to be after the tree and in the space where there was a tree at one point in time that was replanted last year but has not subsequently been replanted. So is that far enough up so it's past that tree that's right near the corner? We can share.
Okay, thank you. So, on the location, we're going to go at the recommendation of the Tree Arborist for the town. So if there was a possibility that that tree needed to be relocated or a new tree needed to be planted, we're going to do that. But as of right now, there's enough room to be able to put it in without damaging that tree.
Okay, perfect. Because that's an old growth tree that we would not see it to the size in our region.
Right, so what, one of the conditions should be the same supervision under the Town Arborist.
And I was looking at the prior set of conditions, so you're right. The second condition, the one you're talking about, is any excavation will be under the supervision of the Town's Tree Warden, which obviously happened and he's nixed it because of the damage to the tree and therefore.
There was, there was no damage to the tree.
Potential damage.
Right, so that's why we definitely have.
Right, and this location was chosen with the input from Mr. Brady and we would put as a condition that that supervision of the project continue.
Right.
And then there was any notice will be given prior to the start of the construction project, just so we have some heads up.
Correct, yeah.
And that the work is performed Monday through Friday from nine to five, which I believe Board, Select Board had already mentioned. And then finally, it's about the pavement. At the recommendation of Peter Ditto, it was that there will be curb-to-curb replacement for the length of the project. So I just wanted to have that amended.
Is that what we put in there?
It's not a half, it's a full.
Curb-to-curb.
So if we could note that, that would be greatly appreciated. And then a question has risen from the neighborhood, two of them, the sidewalk where it was originally going to be placed met ADA compliance within the existing footprint of the sidewalk and I just want to reconfirm that in fact, that's going to be met here because the sidewalk on the other side where it's going to be, is actually a slighter sidewalk, it's not quite as wide, so I just want to confirm that that's a compliance that will be met in terms of the length that the sidewalk has to be.
Yeah, we have to, we're mandated. Correct, we will make all the compliance, we're mandated to do that.
Okay, wonderful. And the last question was that where the scatter box is going to go, just to confirm that it isn't going to be visible from somebody's front porch. I don't believe that it is because I believe it's going to be going along the fence line that's now covered with shrubs from a neighbor and it's not directly facing into somebody's front porch as they're sitting out there, so if you could just confirm that that's the case, that would be great.
So it's been identified that we'd like to be able to locate it as close to the fence as we can unless for some foreseen reason, we need to relocate it to a different area. We're going to do the best we can to make sure that it's not an eye sore for any of the neighbors coming out their door.
And then the last thing that I just wanted to just to thank National Grid for your coming out to visit with us, it has started out as a good, healthy collaboration and I would hope that they will continue this with any of the neighborhoods that they're doing work with in the greater Brookline area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sokol, welcome.
Thank you. My name's Diane Sokol, I live on Cypress Street, right around the corner from Milton Road and Route 9. I'm also a member of Mothers Out Front, so aware of the gas leak issues across Brookline, across Massachusetts. The residents of our neighborhood are well aware of the gas leak at the corner, at the intersection of Cypress and Boylston Street. The smell of gas is present, not all the time, but when it's leaking. National Grid is present there, digging up the intersection, interrupting traffic on Route 9. Often the construction trying to fix this leak is at nighttime, lots of noise, lots of lights, so we know that Cypress and Boylston Street is a big leak that needs attention. Also, when National Grid is finished with their construction, they leave this patchwork of paving repairs at the intersection and it's a very busy intersection, students walking to the high school, now devotion school students on Route 9, people walking to the T-stop and there are large divots and I actually bike through that intersection, big divots with the gas pipes, so that whole intersection is a problem. But I have three questions for National Grid, some of this has already been discussed. First question is, will putting this regulator station on Milton Road eliminate the gas leak on Boylston Street? And I thought when we had our neighborhood meeting, the discussion was that the leak on Boylston Street was from an old regulator station and moving the regulator, regulator station would help, but now it sounds like the Boylston Street will be a separate issue that needs to be addressed. Second question, which you've raised before and thank you for raising this question, is was National Grid doing about the hundreds of other gas leaks in town? The third question, just to reiterate what Cindy had said, the original location on Milton Road, we measured the sidewalk, the sidewalk was wide enough, the landscape buffer was wide enough to put in both the underground vault and the above-ground scatter box. I'm not convinced that on the Cushion Road, and it seems, it's hard to tell because the fence has a lot of vine growth on it, but it seems to be a narrower sidewalk and a narrower landscape bed and, you know, I would hate to see Tom Brady come out, everybody measure the street width and realize that this location isn't going to work either, maintaining the width of the sidewalk and locating the above-ground feature. What we mentioned before on the neighborhood visit is now Brookline Driving School is located on Boylston Street and so there's a lot more new driver or driver training traffic going through Milton Road, through that intersection, so any above-ground feature, we just want to make sure that it's not blocking the view of these new drivers negotiating through there because there are a lot of children walking there, people driving to Lincoln School for pickups and Brookline Music School. So, that's my two cents.
So the, the Boylston Street gas leak and the relation to, to this project, Mr. Barkus?
So if it's identified, and I think that's what we talked about before, if it's identified with the old regulator station that's in the intersection of Cypress and Boylston, once that regulator station is decommissioned, then if that is the source of the leak, which we can't fully 100% identify, that that's the cause of the leak, but the inlet and the outlet pipes will be disconnected and it could end up stopping that leak, but, so in conjunction of working with replacing the reg station that's in that intersection, it could possibly relieve that leak, but at the same time, we need to get out there and fix the leak this construction season anyway, so we have to get out there anyways.
So there's, you, you guys have been in that intersection a lot.
Yeah.
Last year or two.
Yeah, and, and again, it's also due to the equipment that we have underground there is just old and it has to be monitored constantly, you know, physically monitored by a human to go into the hole, monitor it, so, and there's, you know, also of course, the nuisance leak that goes out there where sometimes you relieve the gas from the ground and the leak goes away and then you get readings at a low rate, so you, you don't have to monitor it anymore. So in conjunction of fixing the leak out there and also removing or taking the old reg station out of commission, you're going to, you know, abandon that leak as well, so. It's in conjunction, like, is it being? It's in conjunction, like, is it being caused by the pipe going into the reg station? Could be, you know, but again, it's just a tough spot to dig and really get at it, and once that reg station is, you know, decommissioned, it'll, you know, open up a lot of, you know, avenues to make sure that we've pinpointed that leak and been able to identify that we've fixed it, so.
Well, apparently, there's a leak, as you say, and Ms. Sokol mentions at the corner of Boylston and Cypress, and what about at the corner of Boylston and Cushing?
So Boyle?
Cushing doesn't intersect Boylston. Milton, that's Milton and Cushing. Milton and Boylston.
Oh, so Milton turns into...
Yeah, Milton turns.
Turns into, oh, so it's Milton and Boylston.
So there's one that looks like it's, it's red in between Milton and Kennard Road, which is kind of, looks like it's right at the start of where you're gonna be working.
So, and is it on Boylston Street?
You know, what's interesting is...
Difficult to tell.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I don't believe, it's definitely not on, it's definitely not in the footprint of this project.
It looks like it's like 30 feet from the footprint of the project.
Yeah, I can definitely take a, what was the address there?
See, it's a red?
So, again, I'm not familiar with...
Why don't you go to the podium, so our vast TV audience can enjoy your words of wisdom.
So, I'm not familiar with using this mapping system to identify leaks, but I did not identify this one with my data that I have. I looked at the footprint of where we're working, and I did not come up with this one, but if it's a grade three leak, I can recommend that we have our street crews take a look at it and find out about it. But because it's not in the footprint, it's not, if it's a grade three leak, it is not on our schedule to fix.
Well, I understand that this information is from, is from National Grid, reported by you, so, that's all I can tell you, I mean, you have the information, and somebody...
No, I understand the question you're asking, but also understand my answer. I did my research for the general area of the footprint of this, of this footprint of the project, and, you know, is there any leaks in that footprint? There's some in the area, the Cypress and Boylston. This must be a Boylston address that I did not identify with the street name, so I apologize for not identifying this one leak. But it is in the neighborhood, I can see it on this map, but, you know, to talk to the other leaks that I'm aware of, they're not in the footprint of the project.
Well, is this new regulator likely to increase or decrease these leaks that we're talking about on Boylston?
If anything, it would decrease, because we'd hope that the one on Cypress and Boylston would go away with the, you know, decommission of it. Otherwise, there would be no effect on leaks, unless it's attached to a leak itself.
All right, well, I still would, you know, given your remarks, what I would recommend is that we insert a condition, we keep a similar condition to what we had before. The National Grid by September of 2018 shall submit a detailed plan with specific location and nearest postal address of all gas leaks within the town, further detail a timetable of such repairs with month and year that repairs of specific gas leaks will occur. That's all we want, we want a timetable, we want a spreadsheet. It says there's a leak here, and this is when it's gonna be fixed.
Okay.
And this is the grade of it, and this is the severity.
I understand.
And that's what we want.
And again, just so you understand as well, if I could have provided that for you last month, I would have, if I could have provided it for you tonight, I would. So with the timeline of that, I would hope that I can, and I would hope that National Grid will be able to provide that for the board as well as the town. So that is my goal.
Okay, well, you need to understand that at some point, some of us, at least I will, certainly be voting against these grants of location.
I understand that.
If you cannot provide this information.
I do understand that.
And you don't, you know, you're the one who has the information, so you should be able to provide.
And again, the information that I can't provide is only the information of when we would fix the leaks.
Okay, so let's...
Give this to Kate.
Okay, so, let me make a motion, and...
[inaudible].
Oh, sure, sorry. Mr. Nally, welcome.
Honestly, I have 17th Crescent Road, I think. They have to mic. Thomas Nally, 17th Cushing Road. Some of the points I'm gonna make have been made in a slightly different way, but I think if you bear with me, you'll understand why I'm presenting it in this way. Last week, one of our neighbors saw the grant of location plans for the National Grid project and shared it with us. We were surprised to see that the proposed site of the new regulator station had shifted to Cushing Road near the corner of Milton Road. The drawing that we saw did not have dimensions, however, scaling the drawing appeared to indicate that the northern limit of excavation for the regulator site was located 10 feet south of the Catch Basin, which is a landmark in that location, and stretched for about 70 feet to the south along the sidewalk and curb line. We understood that the location of the regulator within the excavation footprint would be placed to avoid trees. If the scaling is correct, and it may not be, the northern end of the excavation limit overlaps with the visible roots of a large, very old tree near the intersection of Milton Road, and the excavation limits include the site of a tree to be added that will be, is intended to replace a large elderly tree that has recently been removed. There's also a R C N piece of apparatus in the middle of what appears to be excavation site. We've lost several very substantial trees along Cushing Road in recent years, and we are concerned that the sighting of this excavation and the regulator may threaten one large tree and preclude the replacement of another tree. It would be very helpful to see dimension drawings with property lines and significant landmarks, surface landmarks, indicating the proposed location of the regulator, the vent, the above-ground cabinet, pipe trenches, and other facilities. We'd like also to understand the steps that would be taken to, one, protect the viability of the existing tree, and, two, replace the tree that was recently removed in a location close to the tree's former site. Now, we recognize that Tom Brady has been out there and looked at this, I haven't been out there with him, I had another commitment on the 10th of April, however, I'm very concerned about the nature of our trees along Cushing Road, because we lost a lot of them, I don't think we want to lose any more. Thank you.
Can I suggest, Tom, that you have a conversation with Tom Brady?
I don't think he heard you.
Tom?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else?
Again, just let me make, say it to Mr. Nally, that we do have a condition here that the work shall be done under the supervision of the town's warden, tree warden. So I think that's what you're talking about, is that not correct?
Hi, I'm Kathleen Scanlon, I live at 71 Francis Street, I'm a town meeting member, precinct three. And my question is really to understand the pilot program a little bit more. If I understand correctly, in the next three months, all 214 leaks will be measured, categorized, and then a plan will be presented, and I'm just curious, is that gonna be done at a future select board meeting? Is that something that will be available to the public? Will the leaks then have the timetable in this spreadsheet, or whatever format it's going to be, also available for us to review?
So, the pilot program has been a process of research on grade three leaks, and they're measuring the square footage of the gas leak, and then they're identifying them in volume. So, will all of them be identified by September? I cannot commit to that, so I would hope that Brookline has been prioritized, but there are a lot of towns that would like to be prioritized. Again, we need to work within our whole system, and we need to prioritize the larger LVM, large volume leaks, to be able to fix them sooner than, you know, the medium volumes and the smaller volume leaks. So I would hope that all of them in Brookline would be identified, but I cannot commit to that. But again, my commitment is formally addressing this to the Board of Selects.
So can we have you back in September, and you can give us a progress report?
Absolutely, that would be the best scenario, I would say, to go forward is move forward with that, and again, it would probably be another team, it wouldn't be me, it would be, you know, the specialists that are working with this pilot program to be able to identify all this with you. I will definitely be here, yeah, absolutely, I'll be here, unless I get lucky enough to go on vacation, but no, I will be here, and that's...
We'll make sure you're here, we'll...
Yeah, so, but, that's the commitment, is to formally address the grade three leaks in this town, and to hopefully be able to provide a schedule of when they're going to be fixed. But I can't do that today, I can't commit to you and tell you that, yes, that's what I'm gonna have in September. All I can do is give you the best update as I can, and hope that, you know, believe me, I'm pushing to be able to do this, so I can only, you know, push so much like anybody else, but I'm trying, so. I don't want to commit to something and then come in here and say to you, oh, sorry, you know, but that's what I definitely can commit to you.
Okay, so, let's formulate a motion. I'll move that we approve the petition of National Grid for permission to construct in a location for gas mains and other structures under the following public ways, Milton Road, southwesterly from Boylston Street, distance of 180 feet fence, turning and running easterly a distance of about 380 feet to Cypress Street. Cypress Street, easterly from Milton Road, a distance of about 50 feet to the existing 12-inch gas main in Cypress Street, and then Cushing Road, a distance southeasterly, a distance of 120 feet from Milton Road to, and a new regulator station. With the condition that the plans will be approved by, and then the work will be supervised by the town arborist, that there will be notice to a butters prior to the start of work. What's a typical notice timeframe?
A two-week period.
Two, okay, two weeks beforehand? The work will occur Monday to Friday, nine to five? Is that...
Correct.
Do I see nods in the audience? Okay, and the street will be restored curb-to-curb for the length of the project. And then the, the...
Be noticed also provided, noticed, prior to construction.
Yeah, we said that.
Yeah, two weeks, yeah.
And then, the language?
On the first condition.
The National Grid by September 2018 shall submit a detailed plan with specific location, nearest postal address of all gas leaks within the town, further detail a timetable of such repairs with month and year that repairs will occur. I'm gonna add, will make best efforts to submit, to, there needs to be a phrase, something to the effect of best efforts, using, ending, using their best efforts. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco?
Aye.
Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Green?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And share votes aye.
All right, thank you, your board.
Okay, and I think that concludes our business for tonight. Right?
We're done.